The green light and I see it's six thirty on my computer. So, uh, the mid, I will call the mission statement for the Lake Mills area school district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. And has the meeting been properly posted? Dr. Olson.
Yes, it was posted on.
Yes, it was posted on the LMA's D website and at the Lake Mills post office and submitted to the Lake Mills leader.
All right, then I will call this meeting to order. Um, we invite all who are able to stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
And may we have a roll call for attendance.
Brianna Beslik.
Here.
Ken Imers.
Here.
Andrea Graham.
Here.
Kirk Lund.
Here.
Amy Litcher.
Here. All right, are there any revisions to the agenda that any board members would like to make or propose? All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move the board approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, then we can have a voice vote for this. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those oppose, same sign. All right, the agenda is set. The first administrative report tonight is from Dr. Olson.
It is my pleasure to introduce Sheil Gupta tonight, uh, who is a senior at Lake Mills High School and, uh, we try when we have the board approve, uh, overnight or an out-of-state dis, um, field trip to have the students come back and report on their experiences. And, um, a couple of months ago, a group of students got to experience the American Players Theater, which, um, some of you might have, um, attended that in the past. So, we're inviting, um, Sheil to come and share what he experienced on that trip. So, Sheil, I will let you take it away.
Uh, perfect. Um, so I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of my experience of, uh, American Players Theater. Uh, it really did help me a lot and I'll get into why it helped me so much. Uh, but just to give you a little bit of context, um, the AP Literature and the creative writing classes, um, they all went to go see Hamlet, um, at American Players Theater. And for me, it was really cool. Uh, so just a little background information about me. Um, hard work definitely defines me. Um, I definitely try way too hard sometimes, uh, but I think that's a good quality. Um, I try to stay involved in as much of the school as I possibly can. Uh, president of Tri-M, NHS officer, um, the works. If you read my bio, I'm sure that you'll know, uh, that it's, it's a lot, but I like, I like to keep busy. Um, one of the things I like to challenge myself with is AB classes. Um, I tried to take as many as I could this year and AP Literature was one of the ones that I thought was probably the best decision. Uh, it really does help you dive into text a little bit deeper and especially, um, with the texts that we read. It really, um, it's really nuanced. You have to, um, think about it very deeply. And I think AP Literature was a really good class to take, especially while doing the Fall Musical, um, because literature and acting go hand in hand. Um, I was the lead in the Fall Musical. I don't know if anyone went to go see it, but, uh, I was Mr. Warbucks in Annie and it was probably my favorite high school experience, to be honest. Um, I really learned a lot and American Players Theater definitely, um, um, going into American Players Theater, um, I think it really changed my mindset because I wanted to learn as much about acting as I possibly could. Um, going to American Players Theater, um, the first thing that I noticed were they're like such amazing actors. Um, I, at that point, um, had no acting experience. Um, I was in the process of trying to learn as much as I could about acting. Um, and I noticed right away, as someone who knew nothing about acting, uh, the actors really did an amazing job, uh, because, um, we went into the play with not much knowledge about Hamlet and Shakespeare's language is very difficult to understand, as I'm sure that many of you know. Um, but the actors really, with their facial expressions, their body language, um, they really conveyed the story in a way that we could understand it. So, I thought that the actors alone made American Players Theater an extremely worthwhile experience. Uh, next was the different interpretations. So, we had the opportunity to read Hamlet and try and think of it as our, as how we ex, how we thought about it. Uh, then we got to watch the movie, um, in class and that helps to connect some of the dots, but I think going to American Players Theater again was probably one of the best things that we could have done to understand Shakespeare, uh, just to, just because of the actors and how they conveyed the story. Uh, and they did take different takes, uh, than the movie and than the text did even. Um, it was just a really helpful experience because, um, seeing those actors, um, on stage and just connecting the dots that all the storyline had, um, it was just really helpful to understand and it did give us a greater understanding of Hamlet as well. We had the opportunity to have a workshop with a professional actor educator and I think this was my favorite part of the entire experience because being able to work with a real actor educator is just really useful, especially as someone who had never done acting and, uh, was a lead in the musical. Um, I thought that was just incredibly, uh, I was like, oh my God, thank you so much for this opportunity because I needed it very desperately. Um, we started out talking about job opportunities within acting and I think that the actor educator was very, uh, versed in this subject because, um, I personally thought that, oh, there's someone on the screen acting, there's an actor, there isn't much more opportunity within the field, but then you realize, um, there are hundreds of people behind each camera, um, trying to work everything, piece everything together and there's a lot more opportunities within acting besides just being an actor. And it was really helpful to listen to the person's life experiences as well because they, they had such a unique story and one of my favorite things to do is just listen to someone's story, uh, because they have such different, um, uh, different experiences than I would or maybe anyone else in this room would. And this person had gone to New York, attempted to become an actor and then, and she said it herself, she failed and that was okay because she realized that acting wasn't meant for her in that way. She decided to become an actor educator for that reason because it just fit her better and it took her time to figure this out, but, uh, she eventually did. And working with different acting techniques is something that she taught me. Um, there are many, many acting techniques, but I think the one that stood out to me most was working from outside in. Um, working from your character, just looking at their outside characteristics. For me, for example, I was playing Mr. Warbucks in Annie. I had to look at his age. He's fifty-two years old. On the outside, he seems very bitter. He's happy because he has a lot of money, but I needed to dive deeper. So, I thought, hmm, he's actually really lonely secretly. He doesn't show it, but he is and he needs someone to lift him up and for him, that was Annie. So, working with this actor educator, I, I again, connected those dots a lot better and got the opportunity to understand my character better. And lastly, talking to the actor educator individually, um, this was just such a useful experience for me because, um, I really learned a lot from it and I'll get to that in my next slide right here. Um, the actor educator gave me some really useful tips and again, this was in the beginning of the Fall Musical where I hadn't learned anything about acting. So, I didn't even understand that looking at my source material, my, uh, script was so important because there were so many little historical references that I didn't understand. So many, um, again nuances, uh, within the text that I didn't understand. And by using that source material, I was able to understand my character better. Um, I understood that, again, he's very lonely. He needed someone to lift him up. He needed another person by his side. Um, and understanding the character was just really useful because it helped me get into the mindset instead of just trying to act like a person who I'm not. Um, projecting body language, it was such an important, um, skill that I didn't even realize was a part of acting because yes, you can think that your facial expressions are correct or your body is having good posture, but you really don't realize it, um, until you look at yourself in the mirror that, oh, I need to over-exaggerate every little movement in my face, every little crick in my body. I need to be standing with perfect posture. I need to be moving my hands in the right position. Um, and lastly, uh, relating to acting, that is moving with purpose. Um, moving from one side of the stage to the other side of the stage. Um, it's something that you would think that is really simple, but walking on stage is actually something really difficult to master. For me, I had to stand with my fists and balls and right by my side with the most perfect posture because I'm such a confident human being as Mr. Warbucks. Um, and it just helped me move with perfect, movement, move with purpose. And I think conveying that to the audience was really helpful. And lastly, a greater understanding of literature. Uh, between the workshop and, um, going to see APT, going to see Hamlet at APT Live, um, I think it just really helped me understand literature better and connect acting with literature because, um, acting and understanding a character, uh, understanding their mindset really does help you understand literature a lot better. Um, yeah, that's all that I have. Would there be any questions at all?
I thought you did wonderful in the play Annie. I know a lot of our board members were there too, but it was, it was phenomenal and hearing, I think, your background of seeing how these actors performed and how you used that in, into your own role is really impressive. I, I had no idea.
Yes, I, I know I had a bit of a unique experience compared to like other people in my school, but we really all did really connect with literature more because of APT. So, I thought this was a really useful experience.
Just wondering, are you planning to pursue acting in the future or is?
Um, it is something that I, of course, have looked into because I love it absolutely and musical theater as well. Um, but I'm very aware that it's difficult. Um, it's constantly one of the lowest paid professions. Um, going into college, I do want to have it some, have to like have it on the side and, but I, if I could, it'd be amazing, of course.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you.
It's fascinating to hear your kind of, um, thoughts about what you learned at the workshop and how you kind of incorporated it. And for, for those of us like me who've never acted, that's, you know, ten times more information than I'm used to hearing or think about, you know, so.
Yes, absolutely.
It was really nice to hear all that.
Thank you.
I think it was amazing that you've never done this before and you tried something now. I think that's totally, um, on top of your plate that was already full, just amazing. And our family did see Annie and as we've seen other, um, cast members in the community, they always are like, Mom, let's go tell them how great they were. So, congratulations, you were phenomenal. They would tell you right now if they were here. So, great for you. I'm glad you learned a lot and were able to apply that and community theater is always a possibility.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, all right, sounds good.
All right, um, the second part of my report, uh, is just a brief overview on the school report cards that were released last week. Um, we continue to exceed expectations. All three schools exceeded expectations, which then dovetailed into the district report card, um, as well. So, um, the three schools, uh, scored relatively the same, um, across the board. Um, you know, obviously there are always needs that we look at and, um, we, we have the formative data in the district that we are working on and, and that's how the school learning objectives are set at the beginning of the year. So, we're actively working on, uh, bridging, um, some of the gaps that we're seeing, uh, in the learning, but also trying to take, um, the students that we see on the high end of the proficient into those advanced categories as well. Um, I would say like looking over time at our school report cards, uh, they have remained, um, I'd say fairly steady, which I think is a pretty good feat, um, considering the last two years were during the pandemic. I, I expect to see them only increase as we, um, take the test again here this spring. And just as a reminder, uh, and those of you that are in education know this, that the school report cards are so heavily weighted on that one test in the spring, right after spring break and, and we tend to base, um, you know, and, and grade schools on that one assessment. And so, um, I, I think it's, it's sometimes a little bit of a, a false notion and we do have quite a bit of formative data. So, we have a good handle on, on where we're at in the district and, um, we'll keep moving forward and, and I know the principals are all doing, um, some heavy lifting right now to get a lot of, um, things into place and I'm, I'm really happy with where the admin team is going with our school learning objectives and also, um, with what the teachers are doing right now. So, it's full steam ahead.
Are there any questions?
Well, I just thought it was great to see that, um, you know, uh, the, the scores were great and historically, like you said, they've been pretty steady, but, um, just a few times they've been all except, you know, above average or.
Yeah, I mean, we've had a pretty good, you know, state report card history, you know, over time, but as I said, there's always room for growth and we're always looking for those areas of where we can grow and do better.
All right, uh, for the net, just to comment on my part, they, when they come out in spring, potentially have the, if, if you could have the principals kind of, the, the, their building goals that they set at the start, maybe kind of compare or bring forth new data from that.
Yeah, we'll be bringing you back some data here. So, we'll be, um, doing assessments, uh, right around the end of the semester in January until I'll have the principals come back and give an update of where we're at with the school learning objectives at that point. And then again, um, closer to the end of the year, so based on our assessment calendar so that you can see like how we're moving along in those goals.
Okay. Any other? All right. Moving on. I don't see. Ooh, try to get your screen. Oh, sure. All right.
This is a print.
Okay. All right. Sorry for the computer freeze, but moving on to the board reports, uh, the, like, uh, we'll turn to Liliana Gescow. I tried to do better, better pronouncing your name.
Yeah, I know, you're pretty spot on. Well, almost. Um, okay, so I'll just start with our sports. So, um, girls' basketball had their first two games actually last week and I'm pretty sure that they're two and O, which is really good. Um, and in bas, girls' basketball, we have Bela Pita who just committed D1 and signed to Libcom University and that's really amazing and we're all just so proud of her and especially being one of her close friends. I just think that's so awesome and I'm so proud of her. Um, boys' basketball has their first game next Tuesday. Um, and wrestling actually has their highest player turnout in a really, really long time. So, that's really cool. Um, the musical went really well. All the students, uh, were really, really proud of the students that were in it. It was really good for all of us to come together and see them in that. Uh, some of our clubs, uh, are doing really well. So, for Interact, um, uh, the Peeling Peanuts went really well and we're going to start selling those at the winter market. Um, we are still looking for donations and businesses investing in the mill. Um, I know we partnered with a food pantry, I'm pretty sure, but you know, the mill is a very, um, uh, always looking for money. We always need help with that. Um, for National Honor Society, we hosted Veterans Day. It went really well. Uh, we got really amazing reviews, which was really awesome and it was just such a good experience, especially for me. I, I loved it. I have never felt so connected to the veterans in my community and that was just a really amazing experience. Um, student council, we're putting on our annual student council raffle in about a month from now, which is just for students, but pretty fun. We're getting some businesses to, uh, give donations or give little, uh, like prize boxes for us. Um, so that's really cool. Um, and then just the teachers and, uh, the staff, I just want to like shout out to them. They're doing so amazing and I know that, um, our counselors and our, uh, senior class teachers are just working so hard and these last few months have been really crazy with all of us applying to college and wanting, um, letters of rec and all of that. And I just say, I feel so supported by all of the teachers and it's just, it's such a good environment and they're doing really, really well right now. So, yeah, that's pretty much the high school right now.
Um, could you explain a little bit more what the mill is?
Yeah, so the mill is our Interact Food Pantry. Um, it's the food pantry within the school. We also do like some, uh, non-food, uh, things that people might need, but, um, any students and students' families can sign up for it. Um, and we just help you out. We get groceries, basic house supplies, all of that sort of stuff. Um, I'm pretty sure it's every, hmm, I don't really know when it happens, but it happens quite a bit. We go shopping every week, um, I'm pretty sure and we just, uh, help out and we try to, um, get a lot of stuff for the people that need it and within our school.
Super. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, the board will conduct the first reading of volume thirty-one point two policies. Does the policy committee have an update?
I can just say we met, um, October eighteenth and, um, kind of looked through all of the different, uh, changes that they had. Nothing, um, big, just compliance officer changes because of dis, district personnel changes, um, but outside of that, no real specific changes to our district or handbook or things like that. So, does everybody know how to get to the draft to see them? Perfect. Okay.
All right, uh, we will move on to Board Report C. Um, Dr. Olson, do you have any, I mean, this is discussion of the election results for the referendum?
Right, and I think, you know, um, while it's very disappointing, um, it doesn't really change our need that we cannot fit our 4K sections into the building and we're leasing office space at the leader building. We're leasing space at our lack and we continue to spend, um, taxpayer money every month leasing space out in the community. So, I kind of equate it to, we're kind of renters, not owners at this part, point and it really doesn't allow us to do some of the programming that we would like to do and, and seeing some of the needs out in the, the community. So, um, it, like we said in the press release, obviously, the plan that was presented to, um, our constituents was not the plan that, um, they wanted to see. And, um, you know, while I feel that going back to referendum in April would not be a smart move because I think there's, um, a lot of work to do and that resolution would have to be approved, you know, at the January board meeting. That's, that's just too fast. There's not a November election. So, the first time that, um, if, if the board chose to go back to referendum would be the following April. And, and knowing that construction is approximately two years out, that really pushes back the timeline, um, for any kind of new construction, um, quite, quite far out. So, um, talking with, um, some of our, our partners, um, in the district and just some of my colleagues, some of the suggestions were that, you know, we probably need to have some listening sessions in the community. Again, things where I'm not interjecting any comments, the board is not interjecting any comments and, you know, facilitated by a neutral facilitator. Um, I did have a conversation with Joe Schrader today, who had facilitated our strategic plan, if you remember, um, knows our community well, completely neutral and thought maybe that would be one option to, um, ask him if he'd be willing to do something like that and said, just, just listening. So, um, if a new intermediate school was, was not in the cards at this time, were there different options that the community wanted us to see, you know, uh, and just listen and take notes? Um, depending on what would come out of those listening sessions, um, possibly have an ad hoc committee, um, an advisory committee made up of a cross-section of our constituents here in town to help formulate a new plan. I think maybe, um, even though the district had a long-range facilities plan and I know the board was just moving along with that long-range facilities plan, which, um, we had on the website, um, you know, coming off of the pandemic, having new families in the community. I think, you know, maybe some people weren't completely aware that when the elementary was built, that, you know, the projection was to build, you know, at that time, a new primary school. Um, and so maybe going back and just seeing what does the community want, um, and go from there. I mean, I, I think it would be a little bit early for us to get down into the nitty-gritty and say, we need to do this or we need to do that without really doing some close listening of the community first.
I would add if we could do a survey or something too, just so that people who don't always feel comfortable coming to listening sessions, um, and making sure we have our non-English speaking families able to give feedback to, um, that would be important.
I think we saw, oh, sorry, Ken.
Go ahead.
Um, I think we saw our teachers pivot so well a few years ago and so now it's our turn to pivot, right? Because our kids are, they still have a need. There, there definitely is a need. And so, I think, yes, asking the community, because that was some of the things that were, you know, shared or, you know, read about in different places, like what is the next plan? And we thought we had presented, um, what we felt like was a good plan at that time, but, you know, putting heads together can formulate something that we might not have considered or might consider better down the road now that the timing has changed. So, um, our team turned to pivot and I'm excited to be able to do that with great members. So, I think we can tackle it and do great things.
I agree. I look at this as an opportunity. I don't look at it as a, as a failure and, um, we want to do what's right for the community of Lake Mills and our, our children here in Lake Mills. So, we, we want to get it right. Um, we're asking people to invest, um, you know, money into the school districts. We want to make sure that, that, that matches the needs of the community.
If we did, uh, I would agree with you that this Aprils would be far too fast and if it's the next year, there's two, um, April and November. So, we would just be looking at one of those two. We wouldn't have to decide that now, but.
Right, I mean, that's where I think listening to the community and then going through, um, you know, the work of that. We've, we've got plenty of time because, um, on that document that I gave you from Baird, it also has, um, the dates on it, not only the election dates, but the dates that the resolution would have to be filed from. So, you can kind of see that timeline. So, for an April election, the resolution, um, is typically filed in December and for a November election, that's, um, usually in August. So, um, you know, that, that gives plenty of time, especially because then, you know, twenty twenty-three is not a viable option to go back to referendum because that only really leaves us, um, with that April election, so.
I was also, um, interested in your, um, thought on looking at when our existing referendum debt, uh, tails out in timing with what could be, um, some possible dates for another referendum. I, I thought that was a pretty interesting.
Right, and I think that was, you know, one of the misnormers. I think, you know, a lot of people focused on the forty-four million and, and maybe not as much on the direct tax impact of that. But I think waiting now does give us some opportunity because every year, additional referendum debt does fall off the tax rolls. So, as you look at, you know, right now, our chart of, um, our current referendum debt, that middle school debt will be falling off in twenty twenty-eight. That's really not that far off in the future and as we roll forward with a plan, again, by the time we would start levying new debt if a referendum were to pass, um, you know, that, that could almost coincide with that other debt falling off, which means it's even a lesser tax impact, um, because it would just kind of pick up the current debt. So, um, so I think there's some opportunities where it maybe isn't, um, it, where it's still palatable to people and not hitting, um, taxes quite as hard, you know? In addition, the mill rate did drop eighty-one cents, um, this year. So, um, you know, we'll watch that in addition to the house valuations because I do know, you know, property values jumped up quite a bit to offset that. So, um, yeah, I think it, it is. I think that's why we need to listen and then come, you know, have a, you know, possibly a committee, come back with a plan, look at strategically what is the best timing and strategically what's the best plan moving forward.
I think trying to explain to the realities in the classrooms when, you know, like we do have two classrooms of students who aren't in real classrooms, you know, and it's like a teacher goes in there and they make that classroom amazing, you know? Like they, teachers take what they can and they, that's their job, they educate and, um, and, but it doesn't mean it's easy and it doesn't mean that it's equitable for those kids versus the kids who are in the regular classrooms with their, their neighborhood and things like that. So, I think.
Like our first grade cubbies in the closet?
Right, like just trying to show, like your kid comes home every day and they're happy and we get, you know, we have exceeding on our report cards and things like that. So, it looks good, but it also takes a lot of planning and thinking and manipulating and staff and so just trying. And so just trying to really share the realities, not in a negative way, but just when we have those larger class sizes, this is, these are the things that we can't do or that are more difficult, or this is what's putting stress on the kids or the staff or things like that. So um, I think just trying to maybe hear more, the voices of the teachers or the kids in the classrooms, try to explain some of the realities.
Because it is hard to put out, like, oh, this, this is really not an ideal situation. Um, and I think Liliana said it, Vassil, the teachers are so caring, you know, and, and it is hard when you're in a gym and you're watching seventy-two kids having Fayed class together and the teachers are like, okay, we'll, we'll do it because we have to do it. And it's like, that ideally is not the safest thing that we like to do in that situation. And like I said, we, you know, our first grade teacher is remarkable, you know, she's in a, a classroom with first graders. It's not a classroom, you know, they're cubbies, they're hooks and everything are in the library closet um that we cleaned out, you know, for storage. And so there's cubbies in there, so they have to walk out of the room and, and um, you know, go into a little storage closet to get their coats and backpacks. And, and again, go, you know, we're, we're so thankful for the Methodist Church for leasing us space. But um, you know, we're watching kids, you know, in, in the adult church bathrooms and, and the time it takes to get them through, you know, two stalls in the bathroom. And um, the communication is, is hard to um, you know, because we're not running through phone lines, we're not running through intercoms, um, trying to, you know, reach the, the teacher over in that situation through her personal cell phone. And um, and, and, and the feeling that, you know, sometimes, I mean, she would never say this, but the feeling that it's like it's a, a staff that's disconnected from the rest of the staff, because they don't really belong to any building. Um, I know I was talking to Wendy today, you know, they had their, their Thanksgiving meal with all the teachers at lunch and going in. Well, you know, that staff, you know, misses out on that. And that's not a reason why I would, you know, build a new school. But, you know, it, it does get hard, because things get disconnected. I would say the same goes for the rec department, you know, we're leasing offices downtown. The internet does not work um very well. Uh, that building is a, a very concrete building. We've tried to drop Wi-Fi and things in there. It, it's hard to function out of that space. Um, we're running rec programming out of our lack and trying to lease, um, you know, we lease a classroom for the senior center, we lease, you know, other classroom spaces when it's appropriate. They're kind of disconnected and trying to run rec programming in all different locations. Um, we're fighting for gym time constantly between our own athletics, between the um childcare program and between all of the rec programming. Um, you know, that's an issue. I mean, there's just things, yeah, we, I don't think we've complained about, we've just made it work. It's not ideal, though.
And I think as I listen to you say all those things, you know, trying to pull in, pull up our pillars here, like, those are part of our strategic plan, like, those are things that the people in our community, our students, our staff, our parents, all came together and said, these are things that are important for our um students, our staff, our community, to retain teachers, to better educate students. And so I think as we piece all of those together, yes, pivot and find the opportunity to, you know, really make our community great and make our students great and provide for them what they need.
Right, and I think we can't continue to put twenty-five four Kers in a classroom. You know, uh, even years ago, we should have really had five sections of four K. Last year, we should have had five sections of four K. This year, we're, we're doing okay. The four K class is a, a little smaller. But it's, you know, again, I, I'm surprised four K teachers have not complained about that, because I've been in other districts where once a four K classroom hits over twenty, they're, they're saying that's too many, and it is for four K. That's a lot of four-year-olds in a classroom.
And our four-year-old teachers too, they're teaching multiple sections. So that's not twenty-five conferences, that's fifty conferences for that teacher. And, you know, so it's those kinds of things that, you know, Mrs. BQ gets on there and has a great conference with you and you feel good about it, but then it's like, wow, Ms. BQ has this many more conferences to do. So just all those little things that, again, the teachers aren't complaining and the kids are getting a great education because of all the um thought that goes into it. And so like, I agree, we want to just make sure everyone is, we want to retain the staff and give all the kids the best education possible. So we will look at all the options and move forward.
You know, the, there's also the element of um, are there interim things that, you know, could be done or should be done? To, because the length of time now for a new building, should we get there, is probably far enough to where you have to think about, um, you know.
Yeah.
As some, I don't know if it's, you know, temporary adjustments or something like that.
Yeah, Erin and I walked through the elementary today and looked in every crevice in that building to see, like, who, who's moving out, who was, could this possibly be a classroom over here? Do we, you know, put several teachers into one room if they just need, maybe, maybe they don't have classroom space and they're pushing into other classrooms? So we were just brainstorming today of ideas along with Wendy, um, just starting to look towards next year where we could possibly find some space for kids.
I personally agree that it, we should hold off not doing a referendum in twenty twenty-three and hold off until a twenty twenty-four date. And that'll just add more community input and also two, if not three, rounds of enrollment, enrollment numbers.
Yes.
And see where we stand as well for the upcoming classes, so.
I agree. I, I think it, enrollment's been tricky the last few years because of the pandemic. I mean, we were way up actually, you know, during the pandemic, because we were in person. And then this year, it fluctuated a little bit. Um, open enrollment has stayed pretty even Steven, um, that, that's been pretty steady. But trying to get an accurate picture of where we are, I think, you know, this year was still, they said, kind of some adjustments with the pandemic. So I agree with you completely, that'll give us a accurate picture of, you know, are, are we, you know, are we just staying the same? Are we trending up? Are we trending down? Um, it, you know, I, I think that the tricky thing is, and I've, you know, talked a little bit with you about this, is um, you know, you can lose a couple of kids in a grade level. It doesn't mean I need less classroom space. It just means the class sizes are a little smaller that year. So, I mean, we're still at five or six sections pretty much across the board. We have two grade levels where, where we have four sections. But as a reminder, that little bubble class in fourth grade this year, that's a four-section class, is going to the middle school. They're being replaced with six sections next year. That, so while the population looked a little smaller at the elementary, it's gonna, you know, depending on the incoming four K class, it's gonna, it's gonna bubble up next year. So we have several, several grade levels with six sections there. It's a five-section school.
All right, if there is no other discussion, is there any other questions, comments? Then we will move into the, the talking about not making a discussion on, or not making a decision on a future referendum at this point and this continued discussion in the board meetings and at committee meetings.
I, I would just add one thing. I would say if I was gonna, I would suggest starting some listening sessions already in January, so I could bring um a, a firmer proposal to you at the December meeting. But I don't want to wait, I don't want to let too much time go by before we, you know, while it's still fresh in everybody's memory to start those listening sessions and then possibly survey.
Okay, all right. All right, we are on to community input. Um, I see that there are some people that have signed up to talk in the community or in the comment section, um, and we will go in order of signing up. Um, Rita Prescott uh is the first person. We ask that comments be limited to three minutes each, and the total time, we will not exceed fifteen minutes then. And the board will not, will not be able to take any actions on issues at this meeting unless already acted on the, or already put on the agenda.
Well, hello, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Rita Mir. Oh, my heavens.
Is that your maiden name?
That's like way back, oh my. Okay, hi, I'm Rita Prescott and my address is nine six two Reed Street here in Lake Mills. Um, I'm not going to take the full three minutes, it's, it, but I'm, I'm glad to have this opportunity. In May, I'm, and I'm going to address the falling birth rate. In May of twenty twenty-one, the Centers for Disease Control confirmed that the US birth rate is on an undying, unyielding, I'm sorry, unyielding decline. The US birth rate has fallen by twenty percent since two thousand and seven, so that's over fifteen years, two thousand and seven. Between two thousand and twenty nineteen, the number of daily births declined, daily births declined an average of zero point three nine percent a year. Doesn't sound like much, but the pace of dec- decline accelerated between twenty ten and twenty nineteen, when the number of daily births dropped on average point five, point nine six a year. But the decline was much steeper in twenty twenty. The average daily, the average number of daily births was four point zero six percent lower than in twenty nineteen. That's a lot, four point zero six percent lower than the year before. In twenty twenty, the US total fertility rate dropped one point six four, the lowest ever recorded. That's twenty twenty. In twenty sixteen, when Prospect Elementary School was only two years old, based on the report from MDR, MDR offers consulting that the district hired, there were five hundred and forty-one student, students in K through four in the elementary.
So in twenty sixteen, there were five hundred and fourteen students in K through four.
Mike?
Okay, in September of this year, there were five hundred and seventeen students in K through four. That's a loss of twenty-four students in seven years. A loss of twenty-four students in seven years, when the population of Lake Mills increased by four hundred and twenty-two. So that, that's not a direct correlation of more population, more students. It's, it's not a direct assumption. In twenty twenty-five, the lowest number of students ever born in twenty twenty will enter kindergarten. Can we afford to pay forty-four million dollars for a new school with continuing expenses of nearly one million dollars that will house fewer students? So these, the, this is just scratching the surface of numbers coming from the, the macro down to the micro, which is students per year. And that's really the key, that, that's the, the crux of it. I want to thank you for giving me the time to tell, tell you these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, MK Bol, I'm sorry, Bolter? Belter is the next up.
You say Belter, I say Bolter. In fact, my husband is brother, my husband says Belter, my brother-in-law says Bolter, so.
Whatever you like. My name is Maureen Kennedy Belter, and I live in the town of Lake Mills. I am editing on the fly here, because I appreciate the comments that you've made here and they've changed some things that I was going to say. But I would like to do is um, agree with the idea of focus groups, of getting out into the community and really listening. I think a lot of us in the informational sessions felt like there was a lot of information being given to us and we were being talked at. And things that we said weren't really, they were rebutted many times. And uh, so I agree, going forward, let's do focus groups and really listen to why people said no. Uh, second, I think we should work on building trust in the community with providing transparency and honesty. Does overcrowding, the definition, occur overnight simply by redefining class size? One day, if we have twenty-five, we're okay. No, class size has to be eighteen, so now we're overcrowded. Another big nut, I think, in all of this is the elephant, and that's the four K. Needing to bring four K into the schools is what I think is driving much of this. Can we reexamine that? Can we, does the board and the district have, I don't know what, what the word would be, to really examine the elephant and say, this is what is ideal? What could we do in the community? I know there are many, um, mini pods and things that are happening around the country, where four K is actually a tool that's used to build community trust and build uh community involvement. So does the site really drive the quality of four K? So that's, and third, I think, acknowledge and incorporate the reality, the realities of today against the ten-year-old master plan. Birth rates are falling, projections for enrollment increases are faulty, alternatives to public schools are gaining enrollment, and public schools are losing enrollment. Teacher shortages are looming. Maybe not here. I know Tanya has said we always have the ability to gain great teachers, because everyone wants to come to Lake Mills. But if everyone's starving and we're happy because we got the last loaf of bread on the shelf, that's not really a win. Things will come to Lake Mills eventually. So fourth, get back to reading and math. Do you need smaller class sizes or smaller, more focused curriculum? A school does not exceed expectations, and many of this, many of us will say this over and over. If only forty-plus percent are proficient in reading and math. And they're getting worse, thanks to COVID. So if we don't put emphasis on test scores, how else do taxpayers judge the return on their investment? So it's time to listen to constituents, like, as you said. If you really listen, you will hear some good ideas out here, and we're really here to help if you listen. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, third on the list is Nikki Gerald. Thank you.
Nikki Gerald, ten twenty-one East Mills. I'm totally speaking on the fly here, I don't have anything planned. But I was really interested to hear Tanya speaking, and I really, really appreciate that you do want to do some listening sessions, because I think that it's very important, considering what the results were of the referendum. Um, I agree with Maureen, we felt a lot spoken to at, instead of le- letting us say what we needed to say. Um, I wanted to speak about class sizes, which they've already mentioned. Um, I'm assuming, besides the four K issue, that the class size was a big driver of the new school from, going from twenty-four, twenty-five, I think it was twenty-four, down to eighteen. That was the biggest driver for the class sizes, the classes being exceeding their size. Um, I have done a little bit of research, and I wanted to see whether you have peer-reviewed studies to say that the learning and the results would be better with smaller class sizes. Um, I know that you have been asked this before and you didn't haven't really had it, had a study to go by. What is going on with my voice here? I did a bit of research on the internet. I haven't done it, delved in very far, but from what I've seen, there's been a Tennessee study, there's also been an overseas study um in the, um, in Europe. And the results were pretty inconclusive as to whether smaller class sizes did produce better results. What it came down to was the quality of the teaching, which we all know, we have great teachers, of course, here in Lake Mills. Um, I also wanted to addition to the kids that needed other, you know, extra lessons and extra stuff they were given the time. Another thing that we did have in our community in California was at, um, back to school night, there was a sign-up for parents to volunteer. They could do um things from testing, reading, math, library duty even, PE even. They had, could volunteer with everything and.
Uh, this month's consent agenda includes the approval of the following. October ten, regular meeting minutes, October eighteenth, policy committee proceedings, October twenty-fourth, special board meeting minutes, October's treasures, report and vouchers and invoices, and the personnel report. Is there a motion to approve? Or is there anyone that would like to pull out any of the consent agenda items?
I'll move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Brianna Beslick?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, moving on to 6A action items for the school resource officer contract. Attached is the proposed agreement and policy 55, 5540. And are there any discussion before we even have a motion?
Have all of you met Chief Schroeder here in our audience? If not, I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce him. He's already, he came in within his first week in the job and really assimilated into the schools and has offered a lot of support to the school district. And it's already been a great pleasure working with him, and, and I've appreciated his support just from the get-go. So he, if you do have any questions that you would like him to answer, he certainly can come up to the podium and answer those.
Are there any questions? I'll start with, has, for the policy committee on October 18th, the, the discussion that was had and the bullet points that were from that policy committee, have they been all incorporated, addressed in the draft, in the draft agreement?
In, in reading this draft, I do have a number of questions and concerns and suggested changes, additions. I don't know if that's appropriate to do, to hash through right now.
We can definitely do that, yes. And if you have any, do you have any questions for police chief?
No.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for him specifically? All right, then we can have discussion amongst the board.
First of all, I would like to propose adding in a community advisory committee that we made up of members of the community to include parents of minoritized and special needs students. I think this could go a, a long way to providing accountability and community input to, to how the school resource officer program is working for all of the students, particularly those most vulnerable.
Do, Kirk, do you see that, as you say that, because it's, that's been something that's been on the back of my mind, do you see that as a broader committee? That maybe, maybe the SRO portion is, is one part of that. But I mean, I know there's work that we need to do in the community, but do you, I mean, or do you see that maybe it's just a smaller group that's in direct relation to the work that, you know, the police department's doing in the schools? I mean, I, I know there's other work that needs to be done. I'm just thinking, do you, do you, how do you see that committee?
Yeah, I guess it, it is something, I mean, I was thinking specifically in terms of this, the SRO program here, because that's the contract we're working on. But I mean, it could definitely be something that was, was broader than just the SRO program.
I was just, I mean, just was speaking with some other parents, you know, I mean, just with, you know, parents that have, you know, children of color and just, I said, hearing some of the concerns. And I even feel like maybe it was something I was going to bring up to the board at some point is that maybe there's a parent committee that we look at what, what they're experiencing as well. And, and I don't know, just a thought. And that's why I just was kind of clarifying that advisory committee.
Well, and I think to kind of piggyback on that, one of the things that in our committee we had talked about, one of the districts that had provided some examples for us on various training programs. And I know that, like, you know, for our own staff within the district, we really talked about how, you know, the importance of, like, our own district in-house training is what is best for them, you know, instead of sending them out to find something on our own. And so I love that within the officer training requirements, you know, a lot of it was kind of within the district, you know, and things that we were already doing to mesh well. But one of the things that I had kind of written down that I maybe were in, was in there, but I didn't quite read it that way, but was training on various groups, whether it's, you know, students who have special needs, IEPs, dealing with those cognitive, you know, behavioral situations, but then, you know, yes, that mental health portion, and then those racial disparities as well. And, and again, maybe those trainings were thought of while that.
There's, I think there's room for growth. I, I think sometimes the officer training is a little different. I know when I talked with Chief Schroeder, the, the police department does have their own set of trainings where they do train in all the areas that you had mentioned. And then the Office of School Safety also puts out training information to both us as a school district and to the police departments as well. But I, I think that's something that probably could be mapped out so that we can see, like, what are the upcoming trainings? What are the non-negotiables, like, we absolutely need to attend this training? Some of the, the recent offerings through Office of School Safety are not necessarily on this topic, but I think it would be a good discussion between us and the police department if there are some of those trainings that we attend jointly so that it's not like just as, you know, doing her own training, we're doing our own training, like you said. But I think there's some opportunities for some of the administrators to attend with Officer Johnson.
I wonder if, if we did form that committee with the parents you're speaking of, Kirk, like, could they be involved in that number 12, you know, being assessed annually on the evaluation? Could they be part of the evaluation team to see how the goals are going?
And maybe even under a number 11, when they're saying the training, the training topics, goals, and objectives shall be determined jointly by the district and the Lake Mills Police Department. Just add another line in there and whatever we are going to call that committee.
Right. I think we'd have to be a little careful with that. I always think it's a lot like, you know, evaluating teachers, like asking parents to evaluate.
Oh, yeah, teachers.
You know, where you, you don't see maybe necessarily the day-in, day-out things that are going on. But I, I think if it's an advisory committee, I think getting feedback from a parent perspective that would go, you know, possibly to me and the administrative group so that as we do the evaluation, that that's taken in, into account based on those goals. But I think a direct evaluation would be a little, a little tricky perhaps.
Good point.
So in the third paragraph, this is really just a grammatical change. I believe the word distinctions should be distinguishes to be parallel with the other clauses of the paragraph.
Where, where are you, Kirk?
Third paragraph on the first page.
On the second line of the third paragraph of the first page of the proposed contract.
Oh, okay.
In the, it's going to be the fifth paragraph on the first page, where it says, the, the school resource officer program provided for in this agreement will be supervised by the Lake Mills Police Chief. I would propose inserting supervised collaboratively or jointly with the police chief and the district administrator.
Do you have any comment on that? I, I, this was where I wasn't sure, because I know still there's a little separation where Officer Johnson is directly his employee, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think that hits on it is she would be an employee of the, of the police department and of the city. And I think later in the agreement, it distinguishes that specifically she would not be an employee of the school or of the district. So direct supervision, what I'm looking at in this paragraph is who's responsible for her as an employee. Who has the disciplinary authority, who has that type of authority over her? And that would be me or the police department. So that's why that language is in there.
Okay.
I'll just stay up here in case. I can do that.
Not stand the whole time.
Was this looked at by a third? Was this looked at by a third party, like, you have a district lawyer or something like, I guess?
We have not yet. Chief Schroeder, did you have the attorney for the city look at this yet? Or is, is this?
I forwarded it to our city attorney and our city manager. They have not reviewed or gotten back because we were kind of in the beginning stages of before the board kind of took a look at it and decided if it was something we were comfortable with moving forward on.
That's what I thought, because I haven't had our attorney review it too, because I thought, well, we'll get it to the point where we are closer, so.
So on the next end of that, does this change anything with our insurance policy or things like that, having an SRO in the building? No? Would it mean any changes for staff and student handbooks? And I question that because on one of those law enforcement slides from our October 18th meeting, there was something in there that said, with the whole body cam specifically, that piece, if, if there would need to be wording changes or updates within student-staff handbooks because of things like that.
I would, I would have to review the handbooks. And typically, the school handbooks reflect our policies. But that's a good point. I would have to probably read through that more closely to see if there's any changes in that. But, you know, right now, just because, you know, with Officer Johnson before Officer A-strike, you know, we've, we've almost functioned in the district like we've had an SRO. So I mean, I guess it's like, I can't think of anything offhand because there haven't been any issues that have come up just because we, we have had officers in the schools so much. But it would be good to review all of that again and just make sure that all of that language is appropriate.
And I think another thing, I, I mean, general, I, I have no comments on the SRO agreement itself, but it does not specifically match up. And I mean, at specific points, it contradicts policy 5540. So I mean, just the idea, the parent shall be notified and versus the, the principal can be in place of the, I mean, from my understanding, the principal can stand in place of the parent and the SRO has, when they're interviewing, I mean, they need to be meshed together.
I wrote something on the same lines with under number seven, the role of, and how that verbiage doesn't quite match what the policy says as well. And just like the outlined of, like, here are the options if they would need to step in type of thing.
So maybe the specific language, once it's agreed to from the, even the SRO, can be, be put in the policy?
Yes, I'd, I'd have that thought as well, that, that in reading through those, that once we finalize the contract, get that, we should update the policies to match the contract.
I guess maybe I do have a question for you. I, I didn't really think, I guess. One of the things I read in the slide too was about the NASRO costs. And I didn't, maybe I missed it, but in the agreement, is there a decision on who pays for some of those costs or outside trainings potentially? Have we discussed any of that?
The only thing specifically in the training, in the section where specific trainings were entered, is that obviously the police department or the city will be responsible for any costs that are required to keep her certification as a law enforcement officer. We would also absorb the cost of sending her to the SRO conference, which is an annual conference in the summer. And to touch on the training, the SRO conference really is, SROs in schools are, I think, having the same questions and facing the same issues throughout the state. So they really gear the training annually at the SRO conference towards some of those issues of equity or dealing with certain populations of students for those kind of things. So a lot of that training will come in that SRO conference. I mean, it really is geared from an educational perspective on how can SROs most effectively do their job within a school setting. The funding really, and not looking for the school to pay for training other than if there's a cost for the SRO to attend training that the school is putting on or sponsoring, would be to absorb those costs if there's a per-employee fee to attend that type of training.
Is the SRO training that's done on an annual basis, are those slides available? Or is that material available online or is that public?
You can see the agendas online, sure. So if you Google Wisconsin SRO Conference, I think their agenda for the summer, if it's not finalized, it's already, it will be shortly. But yes, you can, you can find that agenda online.
One other small funny, but not funny, about the may provide office space. Since we don't really have space, I mean, maybe we could find some, but I think either decide whether it is or it isn't at this point, and then each year, maybe come back to that to say, like, yep, we do have space for that person. Because I know that that's important to give them a space of their own. But as we are also looking for space for our own kids, just in the agreement, it's either yes or no at this point, maybe.
It's a standard thing in an SRO contract. So I mean, I think what I see a little bit more typically is, you know, high schools will have a lot of times a full-time SRO. And then at that time, they typically do have their own office space with a desk because they're there all day. You know, I, I see Officer Johnson on the go because she's, you know, at all the different schools, she's always interacting with the students, with the staff. I don't see her planted a whole heck of a lot when I see her out in the schools. But, but I think that's why the word may was in there instead of shall. I, I think that kind of just varies from district to district. But you're right, it is kind of nice to have a, a landing place often. I mean, typically she'll hang out in the office if, if she is going to be in one place for a while.
Under role of the school resource officer, the first paragraph, number one, the third line, what is a definition of community-oriented policing? And maybe a, a description of that could be, could be part of the language in the contract? Are you asking me what the definition is or, okay. Well, I think the, the role of the SRO kind of as we present, it really epitomizes what community-oriented policing is, right? It's, it's what are the needs of the community? What, how do we best serve the populations within, in this case, the school community? With a primary focus from the SRO of providing a safe environment to students to thrive, for students to thrive in. If you have been around the schools or seen Officer Johnson working day-to-day and about the schools, I couldn't ask her to do much more. And she asked me to do, be able to do more things. And that is engaging with the kids, meeting the kids where they're at, finding out what their problems are and how she can best serve them and help to solve those problems. And so when you talk about community-oriented policing, I think it's what are the needs as presented by the community that you're serving? And then how do we best serve that community to meet those needs?
Okay, thank you.
You just made me think of something else too. Just, I think these are good things to bring up too. I mean, we know Officer Johnson is well-loved and respected and has been in our schools for so long. But, you know, this contract may need to exist without her, you know? So I think making sure that we're including everything we need so that if some, for some reason, we were to get a different SRO who maybe wasn't as familiar with all of our students, we were still set up for success.
Now, I, I just to, to kind of, whether it's, it's a full, if, if it's a school board regular meeting discussion, or if this can go back to policy, I don't think that right now, this will contract, I'm guessing it won't be approved at this meeting. So with, with the proposed agendas, would, is there a thought that it would, could, if your comments can be addressed, I mean, would you like to discuss them during this meeting? Or potentially put it into a policy committee where it can be hashed up, marked up and everything, and then re-presented to the board next month or the following month?
I mean, I don't, I don't mind continuing going through them here, but, you know, it might make sense to do this in, in the policy committee. Where.
Then, then the policy can potentially get mashed up with, with the SRO contract and, and then we have the reading for the policy changes.
That would, that would work. I'd be okay with that.
Okay. All right, well, then I guess we will table this discussion, and we thank you so much. We, I personally support 100% this, the thought of the SRO contract. I'm sure it, personally, it would just, it's just working out the minor details, so.
And I would just add that if you want me to participate in that policy committee, I'm happy to, because working blind, you know, I've been working with Dr. Olson, who's kind of fed what. who's kind of fed what feedback she got from the board to me. But being able to sit down and kind of hash through those things, rather than trying to figure it out. I think that could be helpful, yeah.
Yes, that would be.
Just let me know when that would be, and I'm happy to participate.
Well, yeah, we'll find a date that works for everybody, and then, and then before that December meeting, we could probably, if we feel like we've got an agreement, we can pass that by the attorneys, too, and just really get the stamp of approval on that and present a final document to you in December.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, moving on, 6B, summer school dates and swim lessons. Is there a motion for the dates?
I move the board approve the following summer school dates. Session one, from June 14th to June 29th, and session two with swim lessons from July 6th to July 21st.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussions? All right, hearing none, I ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, 6A, or 6C, the gifts. We definitely continue to thank the community for all the gifts that they give to the Lake Mills Area School District. And there's, all, I mean, we're just shocked and amazed at all the different things that are give, give, provided on a monthly basis, so...
Yeah, I was noting too that, you know, there's individuals that contribute and there's businesses. It's really a nice mix of things.
So I will ask someone to make the motion.
My screen is not fitting at all, so I'll pass on reading today.
I'll read it here. I got my glasses.
All right.
I move the board accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for the continuing support of the student, Lake Mills Area School District. A donation of tools and a toolbox from Dosin Bobcat to the high school's technical education department, valued at approximately $1,000. 18 engines from Generac to the high school's technical education department, valued between $3,500 and $4,500. And the following donations for the district's student food pantry, The Mill. A $100 donation from Dave and Inger Radl. $200 gift card to Quick, from Quick Trip to Lake Mills. And a $250 donation from Countryside Jewelry. The following donations for the Lake Mills Recreation Department events and activities are the Lake Mills Community Foundation donation of $500 for Club 55 Senior Luncheon. $500 for the Flashlight Egg Hunt Program. And $600 for, I can't see that on...
The Family Fun Day Program.
It's not on my screen.
$600 for the Family Fun Day Program.
Thank you. What she said there. Brad?
Ken, if you, if you highlight it with your, your cursor, you can move the screen over to see the part that doesn't fit on your screen. I don't know why it doesn't fit.
Okay. Well, I'm almost at the tail end here, so... Brad Rosseki donated his referee pay for the youth football program in the amount of $390. Lake Mills Cleaners and Dryers, $200 donation for youth soccer. And a $100 donation for youth open gym. Doyle's Dogs donation of $200 for youth soccer. And Atsalon Screen Printings donation of $100 for youth soccer.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, and too long to reread again, so that's just a wonderful thing. Hearing, are there any discussions? Hearing none, I ask for a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye.
All right, moving on to upcoming board agenda items. The December 12th regular board meeting will include the audit report, approval of Volume 31, Number 2 policy, school safety drill reports, draft 2023-24 school calendar, English Language Reader Program update, and rec. department report in writing.
And probably the SRO contract.
And the SRO contract, and the, for the public to know that the SRO, or the policy committee is an open public committee that any, from the, from the public would want to attend.
Just a quick note on the EL program update. We'll have Jessica Noche and Megan Collins come and share some information, just because we did add a position this year, and they have been very busy. And so they're really excited to come and update the board with everything that's been going on.
All right. Are there any other future topics? All right, then I move, or I ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All, any discussion? Hearing none. If we can do a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We are adjourned.